United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Too loud. I'd like to first invite up the MHS Student Advisory Committee update. Seeing who wants to go first. Adam, you always say you want to go first. Come on up.
I have to give two, so I think we should go in order from like upperclassmen, upperclassmen.
Whatever you guys would like. He's using that last bit of seniority.
Hi, I'm Sarah Garner and I'm the freshman class representative. And today, I would like to take this time to celebrate how the music department has rebuilt itself after the shutdown. This year, we were able to come back strong with our marching band season, our winter and spring concerts, and our amazing performances at competitions. The music departments faced the struggle of keeping kids engaged with music while staying safe over the pandemic. There were a few classes outside, no performances or competitions, and lots of people who left their ensembles. So, the rebuilding process started. We started out this year with our marching band. Despite numbers being down, we had a great halftime show and marched in the Labor Day and Veterans Day parades. We had eighth graders come up and join our marching band and had an eighth grade band night to get them excited for when they came to the high school. We then had our winter and spring concerts, which were the first ones that have happened in three years. It was so exciting to see everyone share their love for music again with all their friends and family. In order for these to go on, many new people picked up an instrument and joined our symphonic band. The high school offers a course called Band Fundamentals, which is an elective that gives kids who have never played before an opportunity to learn and perform. We had six kids who worked extremely hard to be able to perform beside people with more experience and to help the ensemble accomplish everything this year. Lastly, the groups were able to show their talent on a larger scale by going back to competitions. We had the jazz ensemble earn a silver medal at MAJE. The symphonic band earned a silver medal at MICA and a platinum medal at Great East. The orchestra earned a gold medal at Great East. The mixed chorus earned a platinum medal at Great East. And the a cappella choir earned a platinum medal at Great East. These competitions are a great triumph after not performing since the winter concert in 2019 and show the resilience of the department. We were able to come out of the shutdown stronger and reconnect with our love of music over the course of the year. I would like to end my presentation by thanking the people who helped these students come back in the amazing way that they did. Thank you to the music teachers, Ms. Crockwell, Mr. Verdone, Mr. Weldon, and Ms. McNulty for their work they have put into their ensembles. Thank you to Mr. Rosenthal, Mrs. Minell, and Mrs. Wood for all they do behind the scenes to make sure things run smoothly. And thank you to the school committee for funding the Great East Festival and trip. Music is such a big part of so many students' lives, and we are all glad to have been able to do it again. Thank you.
Of course, because tonight's the music banquet, so we need to celebrate that too. But, quick question, I would say is, do you have some perspective about how we can go ahead and encourage some of the younger students to get excited for the future? I mean, I know it was a great opportunity of bringing some of the eighth graders up, but since you're kind of, you know, one of the new that have transitioned, you know, I think it'd be great to hear ideas, you know?
Yeah, I think it definitely, middle school is a great way to show, like, get people introduced to the instrument and all it could give to you, but high school really gives the opportunity to show where you could go with it and the fun that you can have with it. Like, you have the competitions, you have the performances, but there's also clinics and there's more, you get to see more of like the professional side of music, and it really gives like a new light on it and makes it that much more fun to do.
Yeah. Sarah, thank you, because I really give you all a lot of credit for continuing to persevere even though the numbers kind of went down some. Seeing the enthusiasm when everybody could kind of come back, it's nice to see. That's always something that Marlboro has really had an opportunity to be proud of and appreciate that for building it and continuing it in the future. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good call, I guess. Okay. My name is not Risha Candaria, but I will be talking, today I will be talking about mental health for student athletes. Sports are an outlet for so many students, and it's important that this outlet is protected for them. Student athletes struggling with mental health is something that has been increasing everywhere. Earlier this year, I presented, she presented about how the amount of participation within our athletic program has been lowered due to various reasons, some of them revolving around COVID. This lack of participation sometimes causes extra stress or pressure on athletes who may have to play longer or fill in places where they might feel unprepared. Students may experience pressure or burnout because of this. Many students within the school, on the other hand, are unaware of the social and mental benefits of being a part of a team. Being involved with sports means students create bonds with teammates, gain physical benefits, and it also helps so many students do better academically. It is important that this is communicated to the student body because not only will it benefit students who aren't involved with sports yet, but it also helps athletes on the sports team who may be struggling with a lack of participation. This is what can be done outside of the sports teams, but there are also things that can be done within these teams to better support our athletes. She talked to Mr. Rogers, Ms. Wayman, and Ms. Wayman, who are both guidance counselors and coaches at Marlboro High School. Both stressed the importance of meaningful connections between coaches and athletes along with the importance of communication. Check-ins with athletes and being there to support them through obstacles is something that is needed to promote better mental health. In addition to this, flexibility and fun practices can create a more positive environment. Mr. Rodzinski, the athletic director, is planning on performing an athletics committee for next year. This committee will involve representatives from each sport to meet many times throughout the year to discuss different things that go on with each team. They will provide a space for athletes to voice their opinions and promote interconnectedness between different teams. Being able to play a sport is something that many students look forward to, and it is so important that we are proactive about supporting our athletes and their mental health. I'm sure she wishes you all good night. If you have any questions, I can try my best to answer, but...
Hi, my name is Jess and I am the junior SAC representative. As the year wraps up, and this is our last meeting for SAC, I wanted to bring up the idea of changing the presentation schedule for SAC representatives so it can be thought about and potentially be put in place for next year. Overall, I agree we should still have five presentations every year, but the time in which they are placed in the month should be shifted. This would help having topics for each meeting for each representative easier. I know that at times it has been difficult to come up with topics for all our representatives, this year for different reasons, but the time in which the presentations are placed can make it harder to come up with a meaningful topic. For example, when we did not present in the January meeting, it was hard because all of our representatives had a lot going on personally, but it didn't seem like there was much to talk about. It was during this awkward period of time where we just hadn't come back from break, so a lot of school had not happened yet, as well as being in the middle of winter sports and not a lot of new things beginning. Therefore, none of us felt like there was a lot to say. And I feel like we run into the same problem at the beginning of the year. When we come back from school in September and then have a presentation right at the end of the month, it is difficult to come up with much to talk about because everything is just starting and there's not a lot of data from students. I think instead, we should have the first presentation on the first school board meeting in October and then continue with presenting every other month, so then in December, February, April, and June. This would put representatives in a better position to have well-rounded topics. I feel as though with this edited schedule, the dates that the presentations fall on would make more sense and fall on times within the year where there would be a lot to talk about. Additionally, this would provide more time to have the student orientation at the beginning of the year for SAC members, like we did last year, which was very helpful, and it would give time for new representatives to acclimate to their role. I understand that this might not completely solve the issue of coming up with topics at times, but I think it could help greatly. All in all, I think moving the meetings would make the most sense and it could make it so that representatives are able to best provide student perspectives. Thank you all for your time and consideration. Have a good night.
Thank you, thanks Jess.
Yeah.
I think we had talked a little bit about this.
Yeah.
And it's fine. I mean, the law basically says that you have to meet every other month.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can do whatever we want, and if that makes the most sense for you, then...I know Mrs. Sibilio kind of has the master schedule and she knows when it is, so we'll just have to work with her and adjust that master schedule, so that makes a lot of sense. And I mentioned to Ms. Klein that whatever you guys want to do, if you want to repeat what we did last year or this year with the orientation.
Yeah, that would be amazing. That was really helpful.
We could do that again, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other quick, oh, Ms. Hennessy.
Sorry, quick question though. If we were to end having the last meeting though in June, would we be able to though still have that senior voice? Only, I bring that up because that was something that we had discussed before, and I guess that's the only thing...
Right, right.
And that's the only thing, I guess, I would put out there is I think it's kind of important to make sure that we still have that senior voice, and so, looking at her, I think that's going to be there for next year too.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that? Because it could fall, you know?
It would be after graduation.
Okay, and that's the only thing that I would say, you know, I think we need to think about that as well. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I just kind of put that out there, you know, from a voice perspective.
Well, if it's the first meeting in April, it could be the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, you know, tweak it a little bit, so, yeah, like if we did the first meeting in April and then the last meeting in May.
Yeah.
That would, I'm sure that would be fine, so we could get there before the end.
About senior participation in the last meetings, I think whoever the SAC representative might be, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to attend that meeting, but also, I think towards the end of the year, especially if it's after graduation, I think a lot of what seniors might have to say might just be about the finishing of the school year. So, while it is great to get senior perspective, I don't know if we'd be missing so much, or if it would be so much of an obstacle if they were not there, just because I don't know how much perspective they'd really be giving apart then that the school year is ending.
Or maybe a recap, like, here I am, done with high school. What was the overall experience like? Are there any takeaways? Or, you know, I think we could be creative with it, with whoever is the next student rep, which we don't know yet, but...
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and I think like knowing who the seniors are next year, like we'd be able to commit to coming in June, but like obviously, that's like a further issue for like just in general too, but, yeah.
And we've had both. We've had some who've shown up after graduation and some who haven't, so...
Exactly, yeah.
Personal choice.
And we could work with whomever it is. If they weren't able to come for the after-graduation one, then we could arrange to have them present at the last one in May, so...
Yeah, thank you so much.
Great, thanks Jess. Oh, look, it's Adam.
Crazy, it's been a while.
You look so different.
So, hi, for the very last time, I'm Adam Hussain. I'm the senior class president and student advisory council representative, at least for another three days. Tonight, I want to speak to you about a topic that's very near and dear to my heart, renewing the high school weight room and fitness center. As some of you may know, I moved to Marlboro High School my freshman year, and really the only thing I sought out the second I stepped foot on campus was finding the weight room. Like, I don't know, you could talk to my freshman year teachers, but I was determined to figure out how fitness club worked, whether that meant you had access to the weight room, how I could just get in there. And that was actually how I made my first friends at Marlboro High. But other than holding sentimental value, I feel like there are a lot of benefits to using the weight room that can be further expanded with a renovation. For many, the weight room is their first experience lifting, it can help them develop a healthy and productive habit. It genuinely creates a great community of passionate students with all the same ambition of improving themselves. My freshman year particularly, there was a senior that we all looked up to, his name was Brandon Patana. I still see him at Crunch now, great kid. He pretty much taught me everything when it comes to weightlifting. It also promotes healthy competition, you can ask Jeremy LaCroix about that. Like me, it gives those who don't really fit into any organized sports an outlet where they can get active and work out their stresses. And for the athletes, it allows them to improve outside of practice. With the weight room, they're able to build functional strength that helps with their overall performance. And the best part, it's available to any student at Marlboro High so long as there's an adult supervising after school. Before I get into my proposal on what should be changed, I want to highlight the positive aspects of the weight room as it currently stands. For one, there's plenty of equipment. You can easily perform any sort of compound or important exercise with the resources of the weight room now, and it's actually so densely populated with equipment that you almost can't walk through it without tripping over something. And there is a genuine effort from the school to keep the equipment up to date by slowly replacing old equipment and renewing the space as best they can. The school does take advantage of the space, using it to host practices for various sports teams at like, from time to time. And I think there's also a really serious effort to make it inclusive to female students, which is quite hard in a male-dominated activity. To help with this presentation, I consulted the beloved athletic director, Jeff Rodzinski, and the biggest thing he wanted me to emphasize in terms of what should change was making it bigger, and I couldn't agree more. An expansion would help spread things out and allow students to feel more comfortable overall. The weight room can get really loud really quickly, and for some, that's absolutely necessary for an effective workout, but for others, that can be, that can make them feel uncomfortable and feel intimidating, especially if you're new and like an underclassman. Additionally, the current weight room is not very well-ventilated. You can both feel and smell a previous workout just by walking in, and the mirrors sometimes even fog up from all the heat and sweat. It's, yeah, it is what it is. A lot of current equipment, yeah, I mean, it's home, but it could be better. A lot of current equipment is also still noticeably old, like your hands will turn orange after picking up a bar due to all the rust. Dumbbells shed some mysterious black specks that can be distracting and fly in your eyes while working out. I speak from personal experience. There's a steep increase in dumbbell weights. After 20 pounds comes 40 for some reason, and there's still, there are many bent or damaged bumper plates. Schools like Assabette, Algonquin, Shrewsbury, and St. John's are greatly ahead when it comes to weight rooms and fitness facilities. They have much larger spaces with much more well-organized equipment and updated equipment. Some even have school logos, colors, and mascots, which just looks cool but adds to the school spirit. While I greatly appreciate Risha's previous presentation about getting a new track, and I do think it should definitely be prioritized, a new weight room would cost significantly less to implement, increase student participation in physical activity outside of gym class in a much more flexible manner than sports do, and allow students to save money on gym memberships, improve our school's sports program by giving athletes a better place to exercise, and just overall be a great contribution to MHS. That concludes my presentation, but I quickly want to thank everyone on the school committee for giving me the opportunity to represent my class on a higher level and a much stronger platform than I would have otherwise. I've really appreciated all of these presentations, and I'm glad that you've made room specifically for them. I also want to thank Mr. Riley, who unfortunately isn't here, for always consulting with me and giving me useful advice before presentations. And lastly, I want to thank Ms. Klein, without whom I would have never heard of this opportunity, and she actually convinced me to run when I was a little bit unsure. Glad that happened. Thank you guys so much for everything. I'm glad to have served as a member of the Student Advisory Council. I wish you all the best and good night, but I'm assuming there will be questions, especially from Ms. Hennessy.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. I just thank you for your presentation, well-prepared and executed as usual. I'm just curious what your next steps are.
So, in the fall, I'm going to be attending Yale University and studying mechanical engineering, hopefully.
Nice job.
Great job. Thank you.
Are there no presentation-related questions, really? Okay, Ms. Hennessy?
Of course!
No, I appreciate that, though. Thank you, guys.
So, thank you. I think it's really critical to have this facility.
Mm-hmm.
I'm glad that we do have what we have.
Yeah.
Because as you pointed out, it's not really just specifically for people that are on the sports teams. One thing that I am curious about is like how, you have to have, you know, a teacher, adult that's going to be there, how does that work out? Is that something where personally, like whomever's going to try to work out, you've got to go find someone? Do they have someone that's assigned? Like, how does that work for you guys?
Yeah, so I spoke to Ruds earlier today, and he said that there is generally a person that they have specifically that's meant to be there to supervise. In the past, it's been probably a little less organized, like when I used to go in my freshman and sophomore year, there would sometimes be a teacher. Mostly, I feel like the biggest part of it is just upperclassmen looking after underclassmen, and that's like the most important part of it, because it is one of those things that like you need to be very careful about what you're doing, because there's a lot of potential for like improving on yourself, but there's also, if you don't, if you're not doing things properly, there's a lot of potential for you to get hurt. And a lot of people, you know, like ego lifting does exist, and a lot of people just want to show off to their friends. But, yeah, I do think they have someone who's specifically there after school from 2:45 to probably like 3:00 or something, 3:45, I mean, and yeah, like upperclassmen are watching out. It is a good community.
Yeah, I mean, I personally have seen that situation of having, you know, the upperclassmen kind of watching for the underclassmen, but I think it is, to your point, it's helpful if those relationships can be bonded with whomever the adult is. Like, I know, you know, for instance, Graham has often been in there and he's been actively involved, which I think has helped not only for the fitness center, but then also kind have a little bit of a bridge towards some of the sports teams too, which is great. I'm just thinking to your point though about for females feeling more comfortable, it probably would be really helpful, if there isn't already, which there could be, and I might be completely unaware of it, which is hugely possible, to have a female representative who might help to bridge that gap, to make it a little bit easier. And, you know, I just put that out there. I know that Graham had a lot of great influence in my girls who are athletes in their lives, but I'm just thinking that that might be another opportunity of trying to help to engage more students and feel more comfortable, you know, just an idea.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, from my understanding, there isn't currently a female faculty member who stays there. I think maybe sports coaches have been there in the past with their teams when they're leading practice, but it's mostly just male faculty. And I would like to say that Mr. or like Ruds does do like a really great job. If, like, he obviously makes sure that like guys aren't in there taking their shirts off, that everybody's being respectful to the space and respectful to the other people in there. Like, he will come in and yell at you and kick you out if you aren't acting appropriately, which I think is a lot more than some schools can say for their weight rooms or fitness facilities. Like, for sure, I do think it's a male-dominated culture, but it doesn't have to be, and our school makes that clear, and there are female sports teams that do frequent the weight room and the fitness room as well. I think that one is much more up-to-date than the weight room, so the weight room needs more priority, but obviously, like, anything we can do to improve the school would be great. And even anecdotally, my sophomore year Spanish teacher, Mr. Padilla, he's a great guy. He used to come in there and lift with us. I know Mr. Tan, he's a brand-new physics teacher.
Yep.
He's in there from time to time. Every time I've gone this year, I've seen him, so it is like a great thing, and it did help me connect with Mr. Padilla a lot when I was a sophomore, so...
No, I think you're absolutely correct, and I think that's, it is a fantastic way of really bridging a lot of different things. And, you know, we were talking about the music program previously being an area of participation, but this is another area that helps to build those relationships. And, you know, to your point that you were talking about for Risha around the mental health aspect.
Yeah.
It is creating those relationships that are really critical, where people feel like they have safe spaces to be. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's definitely also much more flexible than sports teams and music programs, like you go based on your own schedule, which was great for me. And it was really like, I don't know where I would be if I hadn't walked in the first week and met Jeremy and met everybody else. Like, I used to work out with the hockey team a lot, or like the people that would go, and those are like some of my best friends now. So, I definitely think it can be that opportunity, like especially for a new student, it's pretty daunting to join a school of like about, what, 1,100, 1,200 students, and you're just like this short little guy, obviously skinny, and then, yeah, it's great. I do think as well, like to your point, other coaches, like Mr. Rogers used to be in there a lot, I'm not sure now. I just, I go to Crunch now because, I don't know, I don't have to like deal with all the rust and stuff. I still, like, I wouldn't discount the weight room at all, we definitely have a lot more than other schools might have, but Mr. Rogers used to specifically write out workout circuits for people on the board, and he did a good job of including people that weren't on the football team if they wanted to be included, but you can also do your own thing, and people will respect that.
Thanks, Adam.
He does do the spring. Mr. Rogers does the spring, but as you pointed out, he and Graham are both football coaches, so they're there fortunately in the fall.
Gotta have you go up and use the microphone. Alright, so Carrick Rogers does do the spring, and he is like the official kind of facilitator in the spring, but as you pointed out, he and Graham through football season help out the other teams, and then he and Graham between Carrick doing, you know, wrestling in the winter and Graham doing track, they help out. So, we certainly could look at getting another faculty member that's not a coach, which takes them away from the development of just their team, but who's actually gets stipend and to fully be a weight room person for all the athletic teams and for people like Adam who don't belong to a team, who know they can just show up and there's going to be some adult there to supervise, who know the basics of the weightlifting, who can help somebody that's new to the sport to actually go through the process.
It's a great idea, because I think also like over the summer, that's one of the things that's really great, that the kids actually can be preparing before the school year, and to have someone there, yes, we've had some wonderful coaches that have stepped up to do it, but having somebody potentially from a stipend situation, you know, might be a wonderful idea of helping a group that's not necessarily on a sports team, but, you know?
That actually reminds me, Ruds told me that the person they have in there is a part of, like they have a certain budget or like a grant that they get for having someone in the weight room to do that? Yeah, stipend.
Great.
So, I think that is like in existence, but yeah, of course, adding like a female facilitator would be great and bringing that up, but I do think to do that, expanding the weight room would be necessary, because it, like people are literally tripping over themselves and everything else, and it does get a little gross, and that can turn people off from starting, so that would be helpful, and I really do think it'd be a lot, a lot cheaper than a new track.
I'm still trying to figure out how to pay the electric bills, but hey, man, thanks for the...
Yeah, no, don't listen to the solar panel people that come to your house, it's a scam.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, no problem. Hattie, did you have a question?
I was just gonna say, I can attest to what Adam's saying, especially post-pandemic. I've seen a bloom in our school's culture and gym culture. People are interested in going to the gym, getting active, working their bodies, and it's not just male, it's not just male-dominated anymore. There's a lot of participation from our female students, so even if it's not a renovation to the weight room, which I think would be a great idea, just advertising this, getting more faculty participation as well as student participation, and just stimulating more communities within our school, I think this would be really beneficial.
Well put. Thank you guys so much. I really appreciated this. I'm gonna miss giving these presentations. If you ever want an alumni to come back and give a perspective, Ms. Klein has my personal email, she can do that.
Well, we'll zoom you in for an alumni. Okay?
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this report, this report's gonna be a little bit shorter this week, as I spent the majority of my time writing and preparing my self-evaluation for the school committee. I did attach it to the report, I hope you had a chance to look at it. I do look forward to getting feedback from the committee on my yearly evaluation. I did, just so you know, make updates to my entry plan and my yearly goals. Both of the updates are in red, so as you read through the document, you'd see obviously the original text, then you would see the red text would be the update that I recently did. And if you haven't received it yet, I'll make sure that Patty Sibilio forwards you the word document of the rubric. But she already got it, good, okay. For my second item, there was an attached report for donations, gifts, and grants. There was a mistake on it, so we did send a revised copy this morning. Just grateful to everyone who has supported the organization every single year, but we'd like to give that to you so you can see in total what the amount of gifts, grants, donations are. And just a shout-out, Meg DeFazio-Jarck just did a wonderful job with the Memorial Day recognition with students, staff, and veterans. I know, Michelle, you were able to come, I saw you there, but it was just a great opportunity. The whole school participated, and I was really happy to see how they honored our veterans. But it was just a great opportunity. The whole school participated, and I was really happy to see how they honored our veterans. So, again, short report, sorry, but I was busy writing away.
Questions for the committee, Mr. Superintendent.
I just had one question about the report, the numbers that you presented in terms of the class sizes. Were those October first numbers? Or were those current numbers?
Those were current numbers that I had put into the entry plan to update.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, those are current. I'm looking at them now. Well, current as of the time I wrote it. Let's put it that way.
I know, it's a moving target. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for the superintendent? CNN, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. HVAC projects at Kane and Jarik Elementary Schools. District continues pursuing HVAC upgrades through extra funding for the Kane and Jarik schools. With the support of Commissioner Dival, we have already secured a design firm, and we are in the process of onboarding an OPM firm, hopefully this week. Both projects are currently being estimated, as in, we have some potential designs that are actually literally being estimated by the firms. And we should soon, we should soon know if we will have sufficient funding to support an HVAC upgrade for both schools. Construction would start in the summer of 2023. We have just about $6.4 million earmarks for these projects. And soon, like I said, we'll be able to identify whether we can tackle both or just one of them. And I'll update the committee as soon as that information is known. Timely of the Adam Hussein presentation tonight, the school facility summer projects. Custodial Supervisor Andy White and Facilities General Foreman Dan Jackson are gearing up for another busy summer. And they have compiled a below list of projects that will be addressed this summer. As always, we're grateful for the attention our schools received, and we're looking forward for these projects being tackled. I won't go through all of the projects that are listed here. The weight room is not being tackled this summer, but obviously, we appreciate the feedback. And I'm happy to address any questions from the committee tonight.
Questions from the committee, Mr. Senecy.
Thank you. So just a question of clarity. For Marlborough High School, for the cafeteria installation of four screens, is that the screening that's between, like, on the cafeteria line? Or is that within the room itself? I was just trying to understand.
I shouldn't have called them screens. They're monitors. This is part of our continued marketing effort. So we'll have monitors showing what's available that day, so the students can see it and hopefully come and participate.
Okay, makes a lot more sense now.
Poor choice of wording. I apologize.
No, not, don't apologize. And then, I guess, my other question was with Richard Elementary, the media center, the center wall to divide the room. So when we were walking around to some of the different schools for the appreciation, staff appreciation, there were a number of different rooms we went in where there were dividers and certain rooms to help to create space, but they weren't necessarily like floor-to-ceiling. Are we actually talking about a floor-to-ceiling? Or is this something that's, you know, being added in that can be removable as well? How's that working?
I wouldn't call these permanent walls, but they are floor-to-ceiling walls in the media center, so that we will have two physical classrooms. Because that's what the need is for that school for next year.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was part of our conversation as we were walking around, so, all right. Good to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bow and hand it up.
Thank you. Along those lines, I know that it's not on the list. Actually, Good Now's not on the list at all. But we know we're gonna have to be doing something like that probably in the media center as well for classroom space.
Wouldn't, just my perspective on this, if you don't mind, I would not touch the media center at Good Now right now with construction. I would first look at some other spaces, and I think at Good Now, we built it very intentionally with other instructional spaces that we can use first before we do any construction. And part of the reason I say this is we're still paying the bond on it. So we don't want to do any major construction within the school that would change the scope of what the MSBA gave us the money for. Just my two cents on that.
Yeah, understood. And I know it's a very in-depth conversation over there, so, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? CNN, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm giving the committee an update on the DESI Tiered Focus Monitoring Review. So over the last several months, Marlborough Public Schools has been in the process of conducting a self-assessment of several special education and civil rights areas identified by DESI in preparation for our next Tiered Focus Monitoring On-Site Review in the 2022-2023 school year. The results, the result of the self-assessment is due for submission to DESI by July 14th of this year. There have been several civil rights areas that have needed a review by legal counsel as part of the self-assessment due to changes in regulations and potential recommendations for policy changes to be made to the school committee. This has included a review of our suspension and expulsion, student discipline policy and procedures, with an updated school committee policy that was approved in November 2021, a review of the student records policy and procedures with an updated policy that was approved in April of 2022, and a review of our non-discrimination and discrimination harassment policies and procedures with an updated policy that was also approved in April of 2022. During this time, the district has also been reviewing the district's bullying prevention and intervention plan and the district's current bullying policy. As part of our self-assessment, the district found that the bullying prevention and intervention plan on the website was the original plan developed and approved in December 2010. In researching documentation of previous administrations, this plan was updated in January 2015. However, it was not posted to the website. Another review of the plan has just been completed with revisions to any updated regulations and procedures. This document will replace the outdated plan located on the website as required. The reporting form has also been updated, and an investigation form and outcome form have been developed for administrators. Administrators receive annual training on bullying prevention and intervention and the procedures, and that will be continued to be reviewed with them. There are recommended changes to the existing bullying policy that will be presented at the next policy subcommittee meeting for consideration. And included in the packet was the updated plan, as well as the new updated reporting form and the newly created investigation and outcome forms.
Any questions from the committee, Mr. Bowden, Senator?
How different, because I don't, like, I like to be able to compare the ones, like...
There's very little substantial changes to the actual plan. All the processes and procedures are the same. Things that were taken out were names of previous administrators to make it, you know, more, well, it was, that was outdated. And then, the one regulation that was, that was added was an item for PRS notification of, for PRS complaints for an appeals process if there was disagreement with the outcome and...
What's PRS?
That's really the major changes.
What's PRS?
I'm sorry, Program Resolution Systems. It's, it used to, it used to be Program Quality Assurances from the Department of Ed.
Oh, that process. Yes, right. They changed the name of it. Right, okay. Okay, but you're still planning to bring some new changes to the bullying policy to policy?
I think we scheduled the meeting for June.
Yeah, we're, so, I, we're scheduled for June 16th, and we'll take up the bullying policy, and the attorneys have reviewed and presented something for us to consider. So that will be on the docket for our discussion. But I guess, on your point, Michelle, I guess, is it possible that we could actually get a red line document so that we can understand what was crossed out or, you know, or what was added in? Because to Michelle's point, it was hard trying to go back and forth to try and understand the, what was different. And obviously, since it's a lot in there, it just would help if we can see what they've, even if it's minor, to just understand.
Sure, absolutely. I could do that for you.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
You said it to all of us. Thank you.
Any other questions? CNN, accepted to the minutes of May 10th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mayor, Secretary to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Thank you very much. Public participation. Any public participation? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, Kevin.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McKeely. I live at 58 Ridge Road. Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, thank you. I'm here tonight to address bullying. As most of you know, we were here two weeks ago, my wife and I. So first, I want to thank Mr. Caruso, I know he's not here tonight, but for taking the time today to spend about 45 minutes discussing with my wife and I our situation and some suggestions that we had, that we had made here two weeks ago. I'm glad to see the bullying intervention and prevention plan being discussed tonight. However, there are some, some questions and some concerns. That plan, well, last updated in 2015. My understanding is that's supposed to be updated every two years, which would mean it's five, not seven years out of date, but actually, you know, at least five years out of date. The reference, the PRS, I think, that I believe was in the 2015, but was not in the 2010, which is what had been publicly available to parents, which was not anything we were aware of and would have availed ourselves with that system, had we been aware of that. So that's a concern, and making sure that that is done on the timely basis, that it should be going forward, and understanding why it hasn't been done. For that reason, I hope there'll be time for a public comment. If there hasn't already, I know when it was implemented in 2010, there was supposed to be comment from parents, administrators, I believe, faculty, the whole nine yards. So I would hope that this is not just gonna go into effect as is, but that there will be an opportunity for that again, if that's required by law. I don't know if it is. If it's not, I would hope that the policy subcommittee would take up some, some considerations around that for some things that they may want to change as regard to policy that may impact how that plan is carried out moving forward. One of those things that we would hope to see done is that the results of all bullying investigations, whether bullying is found or not, be relayed to parents of both, parents and guardians of both the target and the individuals who are being investigated. The purpose for that is twofold. One, the problem resolution system that was identified. If a parent doesn't know that there was an investigation that involved their child as a potential target, how are they gonna know to avail themselves, if they still have a concern, of that problem resolution system? That should be an automatic, and I believe in the 2010 bullying prevention plan, that was one thing to change 2010 to 2015. In the 2015, I believe it only says that parents and guardians must be notified when bullying has been found. So that seems like a step backwards. We would hope that that would be something that would be addressed in this prevention plan and in the policy moving forward to require notifications. The second part of that is obviously student mental health. If I'm the parent of a child who may be doing some bullying or potential bullying, that would be helpful for me to know that the school looked at this. That would be something, could be helpful to me as a parent. As a parent of a child who has been bullied, it would also be helpful to have that information so I can be aware of my child's mental health. There may be stuff he or she is not telling us, that that investigation might be crucial to letting us know. The last thing, I know the committee is gonna meet, I believe you said, June 16th. I would hope you could meet before then. I know that's a scheduled meeting, 48 hours, public notice. This policy, this, this prevention plan is five years out of date. I don't know why you would wait another, you know, was that four weeks, three weeks? I would hope there'd be something that could be set up to address this sooner and try and get this ball moving. I commend the district for doing the work that it's done. But this was information that, that the administrators were aware of at least a couple of months ago, is my understanding. So why that can't be brought to the committee for at least a discussion to get that ball rolling? I'm not sure why that would be. And the last thing, and I'm sure I'm gone past the three minutes, so I apologize, but this wasn't something I intended to address tonight. We talked when we were here two weeks ago about two items, one being a review of disciplinary decisions at the Jarik and procedures, and the second being the potential of creating a family and student advocate. Those are things we really believe are important. And I'm gonna give you an example, and this only came up today, as to why I think this is critical. We received an email today from our son's school, not about a new incident, but asking questions about a prior incident and what had happened in 2019 with our son. So with the Assistant Superintendent Murphy had let us know that there was actually an investigation, apparently in 2019, that involved our son as a potential target. That was nothing we were told about at the time. We only recently learned about that, despite being the ones that made the complaints about it. So what I have here is an email from today from the Assistant Principal. What we had asked was if they could tell us when those investigations involving our son as a target, or any investigations involving our son, when they were started, when they were concluded, whether there was any stoppages, reopenings, how they were initiated. And one of the things that came back was in regards to 2019. And it said, "On June 7th, 2019, Daniel, our son, spoke with both Mr. Sanborn as well as Ms. Hilditch, the school adjustment counselor, with regards to him feeling unsafe." This is the same day our son was punched in the head in class. An email from that very day, from the principal, contradicts that. He says, "He," being Daniel, "requested to meet with Mrs. Hilditch, who was out that day, so I processed what occurred with him." This is the very problem that we are concerned about, is that three years later, we are still getting contradictory information. Either he spoke with the guidance counselor, the adjustment counselor, or the adjustment counselor wasn't there that day. As a parent, three years later, to be getting conflicting information on something like that is just baffling. This may very well be something that's specific to our family, but I have a hard time believing that, that this could be just a one-off involving one kid spread out over three years. Having a family advocate, somebody that could go back and forth between families and the school, just to make sure, and somebody that's independent, somebody that doesn't report to one of the principals, and can look at it across the board and say, "Yep, we followed our policies and procedures," or, "No, we didn't," and make a recommendation to the, to the superintendent or the school committee about ways to improve things. We have advocates for other, other areas. I think having an advocate for this would make a lot of sense.
Thank you very much. FY22 operating budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some budget transfers for the committee's consideration tonight. At Good Now, I'm requesting a transfer of $7,000 from the EL Teacher Line to offset overages in night custodial and costs associated with additional after-school activities. At Jarik, requesting a transfer of $11,250 from the Nurse Line to offset overages due to long-term subs and costs associated with additional after-school activities. At Richard, requesting a transfer of $2,115 from the EL Teacher Line to offset overages in the BT Line due to the qualification of a new contract. At Whitcomb, requesting a transfer of $8,000 from the Special Education Paraprofessional Line to offset overages due to long-term subs and providing funds to support additional after-school programming. At MHS, I made an error on the left side of this entry. I'm requesting a transfer of $1,270, not $8,410. Would love to amend that. We're utilizing software support line to offset overages in custodial supplies, music equipment, and the health teacher line. District-wide, requesting a transfer of $8,150 from the Copy Machine Line to offset overages in temporary custodial support, individualized learning support, legal services, and translation support, as well as district-wide supplies. Happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mayor, Secretary to approve. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Pose, carries. Thank you very much. Reports to subcommittees. Senecy.
So, as we've all talked about a number of times, but I'll say it again. We have a policy subcommittee meeting that's set up for June 16th. And for clarity on that, it's literally, we've got graduations, senior things, administrators that are moving on, supervisor that's moving, but we want to have a meeting before you leave so we can wrap things up and transition. So, June 16th, with working adults in other areas, is when we're gonna have our meeting. So, we have a listing. I can send it out. Obviously, you've heard tonight that bullying prevention is on here. We're just knocking through the remainder of...
We're just knocking through the remainder of the policy book, if you will, to get it all up to date. And then we already have established the next policies up after we finish it out, but we literally, I think, are maybe 10? I don't know. I think it's like max of 10 that are left. So I'm going to say yay, and Policy Queen is staying on it, so.
Oh, then you got to start over, it's been three years.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little...
Tome.
Yeah, we're, we're doing pretty good. So we've already identified then our list, which would be the older ones to go back, it's, which 2018 is the oldest than...
Four years.
And what?
And the annual.
And the annual ones, which we've already highlighted and we were going to be reviewing that list because like there's some, like the concussion and obviously the bullying prevention and things like that, that we need to have on more of an annual, bi-annual kind of review. So, there you have it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Members forum.
Wait, I, I'll, subcommittee, sorry.
What subcommittee do you want to report on?
Negotiations.
Oh, okay, good.
Because we're negotiating with cafeteria currently.
I thought you were all done, you told me six months ago you were all done.
These are new ones, we've started again.
Just when you're done, you have to start over.
So we are in the midst.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other members?
A members forum now? Yes.
All right, see and, see and none, Mr. Matthews.
Two things, one, Michelle, do you, would we have a date on when we are, want the evaluation back for the superintendent? Okay, I'm sorry.
We didn't have a date yet, I mean, I wanted to do it before.
Okay. But at your desk, at your desk tonight was the job description of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Murphy's current position. As some of you, all of you may be aware, the, the job was posted this past week and it closes at the end of the week. But I had a conversation with Ms. Murphy about the fact that we, as a committee, haven't had a conversation publicly yet regarding that transition to replace her. And that is an appointment of ours, recommendation of the superintendent, but we have to go through a process again, similar to superintendent. So what, the biggest concern that was brought up was that there are immediate things that need to come off of the Assistant Superintendent's plate in order for her to transition to superintendent, which on the second page are the ones that are highlighted, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Including summer programming. So that, and that's probably your biggest one, immediately, right?
Immediately, but then followed closely by all the federal grants because there are sal, there is staffing that is associated with that as well, yeah.
So I don't know if we can come up with an answer now, but we, we need to come up with something soon, or do you have a recommendation for...
So we posted it as anticipated so that, because knew that we needed to have this discussion about timeline. Looking for some guidance from all of you, it is your appointment. But if you would allow us potentially, we had talked about hopefully having a screening committee and then candidates being identified to then further, and asking if any member of the committee would like to be on that committee. And then finalists being referred to both Mike and I for final screening before potential bringing forward. That would be the formal process, if that's the way that you want to go. There's other ways, like, we're not committed to any way. If you wanted at this late date to look more as an interim position, we could do that, like, looking for some guidance.
I suggest making a recommendation to the committee and we can deal with it from now. Mr. Sinisee. Make a recommendation to the committee and we can take it from there.
Well, before you jump in, I'm, I'm just going to say, the reason it, it came up in conversation was really because I, I know from my own personal perspective, was the concern of time, first of all, timing, because we're talking five weeks, really. And second is, if, if we're looking internally, which I know is my preference, just because I, again, going back to wanting to keep things within our system, is the backfilling of people that would be leaving a hole. And so that, you know, that, are, is it too short a time, is it? So, again, it talks about succession planning and the thing that we've all been talking about for a longer period of time is building the bench and having that put in place, having that drawn out for all of us. It, it's, so, that's where I was at. So I appreciate you saying a recommendation, but I think it's broader than that. I think conversation needs to be had a little bit more.
Yeah, and when you say the recommendation, you mean of who they want to appoint in that position?
That's going to happen naturally at the end.
That's going to happen at the end of the process, but you just want Mary to just pick someone? They, they posted it internally and externally. I mean, someone's got to interview the people, somebody's got to...
That's why they get paid the big money.
Yeah, but it's our appointment.
Mr. Sinisee, what do you have to add to this?
My add is, is that, which we somewhat alluded to, I guess, the, the last conversation, was our hope, as we've talked about for a while now, this isn't like brand new, but we're hoping to have people within that we are then building and grooming to be able to move up. And the thing is, is we really haven't had that chance to have that conversation with you about that. I mean, we've done it from a broad strokes, whenever we've talked about planning, you know, strategic planning across the district, and that's been something we've discussed human resources-wise with Patty Brown when we've done, you know, many of the meetings over the, the years. But I think that that's something which Ms. Matthews already have said, we've said at different points in times, is trying to promote from within when possible, obviously with people that have the appropriate, correct background, but also the interest in moving forward into something like this. And it is that concern about the backfill. So unfortunately, we haven't had that chance to really sit down and meet with you, so it's kind of scrambled to get it done.
And we have the workshop meeting, but that's not going to be until June 30th, so that's too late to be dealing with it at that point.
So through the last process, I believe I was part of it through negotiations, and I'm willing at this point to give myself up again to participate. So I'm, I'm happy to go through that process with Ms. Murphy and Mr. Bergeron. It's committee, so...
Can I clarify, because we can reduce the search and just focus on internal candidates? If that, I don't know if that's what I'm hearing.
Hearing everyone dancing around with the, the whole thing.
No, I mean, I would prefer that, but I, I, if you, for some reason, got a application, I mean, again, I think you're late in the game based on availability of people, so, you know. Unless we, if we all felt strongly about an external candidate, then I would say, then it would definitely be an interim, but I don't think that's what we want to do.
And we don't even know, I mean, we either have to decide that we're doing a screening committee and everyone gets access to who the candidates are, or we're not. I mean, we have to go one way or the other because...
Or we could just do very small, limited screening of the, interviewing of the candidates.
I mean, it is our appointment, but historically, it's always been on the recommendation. I mean, it's really your hire and it's our appointment. So I guess, are you comfortable doing it in a small group?
Yeah.
Committee, how do we feel if we designate, having Mrs. Matthews kind of be that discussion point with you all about how you need to move forward? I'm so surprised by that, Mr. Mayor.
You beat this thing, did that, make a decision, let's go.
That's what I was doing, wasn't I?
All right, I seconded it.
Okay, awesome.
I'm good with that.
Any, any further discussion? Any, any additional ideas?
We can beat the horse a little bit more if you like.
Horse is bad.
Or will you be then in conversation regarding backfill as well? Because if it does wind up being an internal candidate, then we've got bigger problems.
So before July 1st, that would be Superintendent Bergeron's.
Let's not let the scary future
Yes.
affect our decision-making. We're going to get there.
Of course.
That's why.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not afraid, I'm just...
Yes.
We're going to get there.
Okay.
It's all good.
All right.
It's all good. Do we have to vote, after, should we, should we vote on it officially, or?
All those in favor, opposed, good luck.
Thank you.
So in terms of Mike's evaluation, I mean, we do have to provide the numeric part of the evaluation to the state, even though he's leaving. And he expressed to me that he would be interested in getting feedback above and beyond just the numbers as well. So I, so you're definitely going to be here for the June 14th meeting, then the question was whether or not you'd be here for the June 28th meeting.
I serve at your pleasure.
Yeah.
So you, you guys tell me what you would like me to do.
We would like you to be here for the 28th meeting.
I'm going to be here.
But I would like to try to do the presentation of your review at the 14th meeting.
That's fair.
Okay? So that means I am going to need...
I'm going to say by the 8th, so that you have time to compile and chase people.
Except that I'm out of town that following weekend. No, 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 we're not doing this again. We are not doing this again. You have it already.
Right, yeah, we have it.
Presumably you've already started reading it if you haven't already read it.
So how about the 1st?
So, why don't we say the, like, the 5th? Well, you know, graduation's on the 5th, you know, if I have it like, you know, by that night or like Monday, I'll, no, let's say the 5th, by the 5th, we'll give you that weekend. All right, so that's one...
Two, four.
Two, if you finish it before.
Oh, Michelle will take it.
If it's finished before, absolutely send it my way.
And Arthur will be the first one to get it.
I'm just going to be away parts of both of those weeks, so, but I, I will figure it out, okay? Good?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good.
Are we all membered forummed out?
Oh, I have reviewed this warrant and I will sign it.
Oh, and I did want to mention the Memorial Day program at JARIC, which, you know, both my kids went to JARIC, so it always, when they sing that one song, it always makes me cry.
American?
The tears just kills me. But I was so impressed, because I, you know, they're little kids and we know how difficult sitting still has been for them all this year. They were so well-behaved, they were amazing. And it was great, and it was a big crowd there. It was, it was great, it was a really nice, the whole thing, and Mrs. DeFazio still, she's amazing. And she had her, both of her kids, who are both active duty in the military, were there. And there were a lot of, I loved how they identify, well, I guess they always do this, but years ago, they would identify all of the veterans, like, would have like posters on boards with the kids' names, but she pointed out, you know, who each one was, you know, invited by, and it was great, it was really, it was great. That's all.
Good, any other members? Mr. Sinisee.
Of course, I'm excited, we've got graduation coming up. We've got a lot of really great activities for the seniors, and I'm going to say, I am so looking forward to the graduation walk and the, the kids getting to go through the schools and see everyone again. So I'm thrilled that that's going to be added back in, and I'm thrilled that we're doing all we can to keep it as a single ceremony and have everyone just putting it back out there. So thank you for all of the hard work that I know it has taken to get that planning underway facilities-wise and all of that, but I'm really thrilled with the opportunity of the kids being able to walk around and, and thank all of the staff and educators throughout the whole system, because I know, you know, seeing the elementary teachers, especially when they get to see the kids that they had when they were really little, it's, it's just really heartwarming and really special. I know as a parent, watching, you know, my kids be able, well, my oldest kid have that opportunity, my middle one didn't because she was COVID kid, you know, but, you know, it's, it's really, it's really meaningful. And I'm sure like you, you know, as being an elementary teacher, you see these kids that you kind of sent on the way and they circle back around, and so much of those relationships are just amazing, because you're like, I've done it, you know, here they go, go fly. So thank you for really pulling that together and having, having that happen, I can't wait to see it, so thanks.
When is the walkthroughs?
June 2nd. Sorry, I read all through the email from Mr. Riley, I am ready to go, I'm too excited because I have a high school kid still in the realm.
I didn't get an email from Mr. Riley.
I can forward it to the committee because it's exciting, so.
Any other members?
A motion to go into an executive session to conduct strategy regarding bargaining with our incoming superintendent and to not reconvene in public, in open session. We will, we will exit from executive session.
So moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Oh, no, roll call, sorry.
Yes.
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 We're in executive session and we'll finish up there. Thank you very much.